We'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning. It is February 1st, the day before Groundhog Day. All three county commissioners here, and the Eagles are in the Super Bowl. With that, we will move to consent and approval. I'm sorry, I'm happy.
We have forty-
I'm not usually going to be able to say that too much longer in my lifetime, so that's why I did it.
We have forty-four exonerations, eight hundred and eight thousand, eight seventy-five, ninety minutes for January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three. General County Fund vouchers, seventy-three thousand, sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. Nine-one-one, nine fifty-seven thirty-four. Chestnut Ridge Park, twelve thousand, five hundred. Camp Muffley, three thousand, eighty-two dollars, fifty-seven cents. Mason Dixon Park, six hundred and forty-five dollars. Mon County Center, three hundred and fifty-four dollars, thirty cents. Assessor's valuation, seventy dollars. Federal forfeiture, five thousand, five eighty-eight. ARPA, forty-four thousand, two hundred. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, twenty-three thousand, nine eighty-sixty-five. Nine-one-one, three thousand, seven ninety-one seventy-one. Home confinement, six thousand, five fifty-eighty-five. Camp Muffley, eight twenty-ten. Mason Dixon Park, forty-two eighty-eight. Mon County Center, two sixty-seven twenty-six. Recreation levy, two thousand, three twenty-two. Assessor's valuation, nine sixteen twenty, for a voucher total of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one fifty-five fifty-three. We have position vacancies for boards and authorities listed on our website, and fiduciary orders for February first, twenty-twenty-three.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Poppy move in second. All those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Okay. No fiduciary orders?
Well, you just approved-
Well, I mean, no, no, no. Okay, okay. Introduction of new employees. You service the center?
We have Austin Utzinger, part-time relief worker. His start date is today, fourteen forty per hour. Obviously, as a part-time relief worker, you're not eligible for benefits.
Move to approve the personnel as presented?
Second.
Poppy move in second. All those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Any others?
Uh, no.
Okay. Good. Okay, we'll have comments from the public. Feel free to state your name, address, and we'd like to hear from you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jason Charles. I'm known by no other name for, um, my address I cannot provide for you because I, it was taken while I was unlawfully incarcerated, so I do not have that information for you. I am trying to, oh, well, that's-
Okay, that's all right. We'll wait till-
Anyway, uh, let me reiterate and add, there is nothing that I can do, there is nothing that you can do for the work that is needed. You only offer Band-Aids. What is needed, only the surgeon can perform. Why are you even trying to do good? Don't you know that there are none good? No, not one? You deceive the people with your Band-Aids. You give them false hope. There is something, however, you can stop doing. Why are you continuing in that which is contrary to the truth? Repent. For it is only in his righteousness that you can be saved. A storm is a-coming. It would be better for you to do absolutely nothing than to lead a child of God astray. Before I stir up conflict in this community, I pause, so that if the counselors wish to have a private discussion, I will yield. Take note of the repetition. Five times in the Holy Scriptures, it states not to take an oath. We all know not to kill, mentioned only twice. Take note of the progression. First warned not to take an oath, then told if one does to abide by it. Then, the people will become a lover of a false oath. People will just come complacent with the false power. They will follow the leadership of perdition, thus leading to the devastation of the people. How devastating is it that the sheriff does not uphold to his oath? The answer is catastrophic. I stood here last week. As Perry Palmer was present, I called him out. He remained silent. If I was called out for not upholding to my oath, I would deny the allegations, give rebuttal with evidentiary facts. Hearing no rebuttal, the conclusion is true. He knows it, and you know it full well. He does not uphold to his oath. Again, I call for the immediate impeachment of the Honorable Sheriff and Treasurer of Montegalia County, Perry Palmer. But I have recently found out that you cannot do that. You can only stop sending him money, to which you have no discretionary how it is spent. Seeing that it would be unwise to defund the police while there are still those who walk in unrighteousness, would you please officially ask him to uphold his oath to those who do good? He cannot articulate an argument for he, for why he comes against me, because he has none. You saw it firsthand before you, here. He only acts in force, and to a man that is free, fear is not an enemy. Okay, I want to start exposing their lies, their list of lies here. One blind to the truth may not see that they are lies, but I can assure you that in the eyes of God, what they are doing is evil. Evil is, by biblically, biblical definition, anything contrary to the truth. It can range from "that's not going to go very well" to "you," uh, to spending eternity separated from God, or if you like, burn in hell. I think that if someone was going to separate me from the one that I love, I would be motivated enough to avoid doing that thing. Conclusion, one loves righteousness, the truth, the way, the light, in the fear of God, or one serves the father of lies. Take your pick. There's only two ways here. There's only two paths. I will explain how government, which was defined as in Latin, is mind control, in contrast, the biblical definition of government will rest upon his shoulders. To those who fear God, or to those who do good, fear not the sword. They must rule in righteousness. That's an order from, you know, God Almighty. This is why we were raised never to talk about politics or religion, because if we figured out both, they would know they should be serving out of love and not out of the love for money. It is the difference, it is the difference between right and wrong, not left and right. It is the difference between the church and the state, the incorruptible with the corruptible. Politicians are emphatically corrupt. There is going to be a recovery for God's people. We'll turn, and his promise will be fulfilled to heal the land. Light has nothing to do with darkness. Come out from her. That's a commandment from the Lord. Jesus Christ said, "You are either for me or against me." So let's see if the state and those who follow in her ways are for Christ or against him. So here we go, a list of everything to why it is so evil. I'm going to start with a pet peeve of mine and show how it is-
You could try and, I'm going to give you an extra minute or so, try and put conclusion to this.
Oh, I'm gonna come back next week and finish up.
Okay.
This is a lengthy speech, but yeah. I won't have a conclusion today, but I mean-
Okay. So if you want to finish your last paragraph, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, sure. No problem. Uh, yeah, this is, okay, so, so how it is evil and why it's so evil, and how it's a big moneymaker. Basically covers every aspect of life, and it attempts to destroy the image God used to convey the church as his bride. If the lies can destroy the marriage, then the image Jesus used as his set-apart followers belonging as his bride, in the eyes of the world, it is tarnished, therefore does not convey the truth, or his truth. That cannot happen on my watch. You can suffer me, just don't, for your own sake, tarnish the image of a man's bride. One would think to save this image, we should fight. The word of God commands us to come out from her. Let the wicked be wicked. They will eventually turn, but do not run alongside them, trying to save them, something you cannot do, as they run off the proverbial cliff. To make change, one must stop being part of the problem.
Okay. And we'll keep this for next week. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing none, we will close. Comments from the public. At this time, we will have a second reading of public hearing regarding the Mon County Comprehensive Plan titled "The Future of Montegalia County: Creating Meaningful Connections." Okay, I plan on opening the public hearing. What I request is Andrew, if you want to come down and give a synopsis of the, uh, plan, then we will have those people who are for it speak, those against it, and then you'll be able to respond to any of the questions, okay?
Okay. Thank you very much.
The point of order, before we start, can we confirm if the staff has received any communications regarding either to or from, against this ordinance?
Communications, we're supposed to go to the planning office, and we haven't heard anything.
We haven't received-
Not for months.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to clarify.
And we've been able to integrate, but thank you for asking. That's excellent. So, just to remind everybody, the general purpose of a comprehensive plan from our state code is to guide a governing body to accomplish a coordinated and compatible development of land and improvements within its territorial jurisdiction in accordance with present and future needs and resources. Note that it, that the comprehensive plan in and of itself is not directly a regulatory document, i.e. is not an ordinance, but guides the development of such regulatory documents. So, uh, since the last version, which we had to update in twenty thirteen, we've done some things differently this time. At the, uh, this is a culmination of two years of work, great connection with the community. In twenty thirteen, it was only for four planning districts, which were a small subsection of the county as a whole. Now it encompasses the whole county, gives guidance. It is, uh, the last one was an independent effort on the part of the county. This time, we coordinated with the Metropolitan Transportation Plan and the municipalities, uh, and did a good work, so that we, we worked well together. This will show a little bit, has some, some enhanced presentation capabilities, which the, the, uh, the MPO and the City of Morgantown are looking to emulate. They think it's a, a good way to, uh, do so. And, uh, there, apart from that, it tries to present guidance on a number of fronts, and I will show how that works. If you were to go to our webpage and click on the Comprehensive Plan page, you can print off the individual sections. We are going to show what happens when you click on the linkable, uh, or the clickable plan. You'll notice that the plan has the beginning of it, uh, sorry, a plan at a glance, which allows you to get an overview of the recommendations about where it is recommended by the public's vision for what it wants to become. Target areas for thoughtful investment and resources in the future, and areas where it is not advised to, to have a heavy touch. So, in the rural areas, it advocates mostly preservation and guidance for maintaining the way of life that those people prefer. These kinds of ideas tend to then give place types and things that are much more visual, which helps then, if you were to do an effort of implementing, et cetera, to, uh, proceed and find guidance within this document as to how you may proceed. Not a have-to, just a how you might. So, for instance, if you were looking for what would be next steps, you might click on the implementation metric, uh, matrix, which would then give a summary of all the, the strategies and recommendations for the plan, and rough timelines about when they would be affected, and, or if you're a developer or a neighborhood looking to, um, do perhaps a neighborhood plan or a development plan, you might use the site plan concepts as a guide for how you might proceed. So, in short, that is sort of what we're looking at. Uh, it is, even though this is a point in time, all planning efforts are constant, and we'll always field more comments, and it will hopefully make it into improvements in the future.
Thank you. I'll leave this up just a bit. Yeah, I appreciate if you would. Thank you. Is there any individual who would like to speak in support of the county plan? Okay. Seeing none. Are there any who want to speak in opposition to the county plan? Seeing none, I don't need Andrew for you to come back up to answer any questions, since we have not received any. So, I appreciate all the work you and your staff have done, so I will close.
I would like to ask a couple of questions.
Oh, go right ahead.
Andrew, would you come up? And I just want to, to clarify. You, you made it in your opening statement, but this document just serves to put a vision forth as far as how development would occur, and there's nothing regulatory about it.
Correct.
Okay, so there's nothing, if we pass this, it doesn't put any restrictions on anybody?
No, it provides a guidance for, for decision-making, but there is no regulatory capacity to this.
And specifically, it, it sets the goals, objectives, and strategies of future development in Montegalia County. How receptive do you think developers will be to embracing these goals? And the second part of that, did any developers participate in your public outreach in stakeholder engagement process?
Yes and yes. The ones that participated, uh, were very strong advocates for this. This is, again, why we tried to make sure it was guidance that made sense. We tried to take advantage of areas. For instance, let's be honest, Montegalia County is a challenging place to develop, and yet we're growing because it's got topographical issues, and so understanding sort of the needs of development in order to get housing, for instance, you need to be sensitive to make sure where you can easily and safely build, that you make it easier to build in those areas, and that would be the kind of things that you would see in the guidance. There are the toolkits of how might you do this more sensibly.
Okay. And looking through the plan, it talked about the four areas, areas to preserve, areas to invest, areas to grow, areas to serve. But it didn't really zero down on, it kind of gave general areas of where those might be. Um, but that is, that, those distinctions, was, how was that informed? Was that based off of the survey? Was that just based off of, like, how did you determine what areas to invoke? Uh, obviously, you know areas that serve because of the infrastructure. It's already there.
Correct.
Um, but areas to preserve, areas to invest, areas to grow. What was the thought process putting into? Or is that just saying that we need to have these four areas as a county to kind of have, you know, be a kind of all-inclusive and, uh, development? Or, again, talk, talk about those four areas, and is that something, is that like a template, or is that something that you guys, through the process, you know, said, "This is what we need to focus on"?
Yes and yes. Okay, so, the, the idea is that these four topics that you cited provided the strategic framework, that came from the public feedback. We had over twice the public feedback of the last time, trying to say certain areas, we want to be light-touch at most. Those are areas to preserve, for want of a better terminology perhaps, but that was the idea, that those areas that, you know, we're kind of fine where we are. We don't want too much. Just tell us how we could do things a little bit better. Other areas, obviously, where the county is investing a lot at, say, uh, key intersections of the highway, et cetera, they need to get more bang per buck, because you're investing a lot in there. That would be an area to invest. Areas that are currently growing, those, and again, this came from the public, but the exact boundaries are not prescriptive. They're, they're guidance areas. That's why if you look at them, they are general areas with, uh, kind of half-mile from existing development is a more logical place to develop, rather than out in the middle of nowhere, uh, because the infrastructure's there. So, it's just a guidance, really, trying to say, where is the most effective, and it was corroborated by the public that participated in the process.
Because I looked to see if you really called out specific areas, and other than a survey response that said that the priority investment area was the Cassville, Blacksville area, there really wasn't any, anything, any specific area called out in the county.
No, no. Again, these were just where existing development was, was going in, what kind of facilities to promote in those areas. I didn't, I think perhaps because we had names for these kinds of trends that you're, that may have been a better way to talk about the strategic ideas, where what are we doing now? What's going on? Does this seem reasonable? And the survey respondents said yes. And one of the things, though, to your point, that really did resonate, that Cassville, Blacksville areas said, you know, no, no, these need to be targeted areas, and so they were included as, as areas that could, could benefit from strategic investment in the future.
Could you tell whether that was a product of the people that live in an area, or the product of what we think, you know, across the county, hey, if we really need to grow, we should grow here?
It came back in the surveys. Most of the surveys did not have the specificity, but when we talked with stakeholders, they, that were from the area, they seemed to indicate that that was, um, consistent. It's hard to say, because people are free to come and go at a lot of these public events, and we didn't grill them to say, "Where are you from specifically?" Uh, I, we, we were just trying to get feedback. And again, these are guidelines. There's no requirement. There's nothing, uh, that, that we have to follow exactly, as is just a guidance for coordinating, uh, work in the future.
Okay, that's all I have, present.
Seeing that we have a discussion now, we have a motion to approve? Oh, no, we don't have to approve, because it's just a hearing.
It's in later on.
It's later in the, yeah, sorry. It will be later. Sorry. Okay.
Disclose.
I'll just close the public hearing now. Okay. Grants, Colin Coon?
I have the question for reimbursement. The first one is for the Community Development Lot Grant in the amount of one thousand, seven hundred, seventy-four dollars and eight cents. And then the next three will be for the seed grant. The first one's for October, and it's two thousand, five hundred, eight dollars and forty-eight cents. The next one's November, two thousand, four hundred, fourteen dollars and forty-three cents, and December for two thousand, eight hundred, six dollars and thirty-two cents.
Move that through the present signing the grant documents as presented?
Second.
Poppy move in second. All those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pass it. Correspondence?
I have none. I don't know if you all have received any, but I do not have any.
I've none.
I have none.
Nope.
Okay. Seeing no correspondence, and no unfinished business, we will move to new business. Now, to consider for approval, the Mon County Comprehensive Plan titled "The Future of Montegalia County: Creating Meaningful Connections." What is your preference?
I move that we approve the Montegalia County Comprehensive Plan as presented?
Second.
Poppy move in second. All those in favor, well, is there any discussion?
No, I do want to thank Andrew and his group for the very comprehensive effort. Um, it's a very easy-to-read document, and it's very well put together, and, uh, just thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this is a state requirement, so we update it every ten years, I believe, so we appreciate you following the due diligence and keeping us in compliance, and, um, that's, that's pretty much it.
Okay. Poppy move in second, as was. All those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye. It now passes, and it will be there for ten years. Thank you. Now you can relax. Consideration approved, requisition number seventy-one for the University Town Center Excise Tax District Administrative Expense Fund.
Requisition is for one thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. This money will be paid to Snell and Wilmer. This is for their tax consulting on the district.
Move that we approve requisition seventy-one as presented?
Second.
Poppy move in second. All those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
To consider for approval, letter of support requested by the City of Morgantown Arts and Cultural Development for the grant application to the West Virginia Department of Arts, Culture, and History for Community Arts Project Support.
Move that we approve the letter of support as presented?
Second.
Poppy move in second. Any discussion? This was a request from the city. Okay. All those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Consideration to approve an addendum to the open-end master lease agreement with Merchants Fleet Management.
Move that we approve, uh, the addendum to Merchants Fleet Management Agreement as presented?
Second.
Poppy move, second. Is there any discussion?
The, the point of this is, um, we have been talking to merchants for a couple of months about changing the terms. This, this changes the terms of net thirty. Uh, previously, the terms were due by the end of the month. The bills came out on, um, the twelfth of the month. So, with our process, it, it was sometimes going into, we would process it in the next available meeting, and there was times that it would actually be late. So, we were dealing with, uh, dealing with the threat of late fees, so we, uh, we negotiate with them, and they're changing the terms of net thirty.
Okay. All those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Consider for approval, requisition number eleven for Series Twenty-Twenty-One B Harmony Grove Phase One Project Fund.
Requisition is for one million, seventy-six thousand, three oh three, eighty-three. I'm going to give you the breakdown. We have five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventeen cents going to Anderson Excavating, and we, then we have one million, seventy thousand, five seventy-six, sixty-six, going to various third-party payees, Preston Contractors, Adrian Enterprises, Morgantown Utility Board, Mills Group, and March Weston.
Okay.
Move that approve requisition eleven as presented?
Second.
Poppy move in second. All those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any other new business?
I have none.
Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on. Reports from elected officials and department supervisors, and hopefully, they're going to have an announcement.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Forrest Wine with Executive Director for Montegalia EMS. To my right is Jamie Chambers. She is the Director of Clinical Services for Mon EMS. Uh, I wanted to come today to announce to the commission that, um, I know we've been working on, uh, an alternate destination, uh, policy for, uh, certain patients that meet certain criteria to be transported to the Hope Hill Sobering Center. We submitted a plan to the state. Um, the, just as a little primer, the, uh, the state has the, the Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council, which oversees all of the EMS agencies in West Virginia. Above them is a, a group called the Medical Policy Care Committee, and that is a group of physicians that are regional medical directors, that also includes the state medical director, and they oversee to make sure that as EMS agencies implement things, that the proper safeguards are implemented, that, uh, folks aren't doing stuff sort of willy-nilly, and that there's actually a, a process and thought behind there. I will tell you that that group, uh, they're wonderful folks. They do tend to move a little, a little bit slower, uh, and, and they're a little conservative in, in some of their, uh, embracing of new technologies in medicines. Uh, but at their January eighth, twentieth meeting, they did allow, uh, the Mon EMS Alternate Destination Project, uh, in a beta form for a two-year test run, which is, which is fantastic. Um, probably the most notable thing was, uh, which I've never seen happen out of this group, is they didn't change anything, which, which kind of floored me. They usually always have some sort of, it's kind of like when you go to an auditor, there's, they always find something, right? Um, so, uh, Dr. Shukas, our medical director, basically the county medical director, did a great job of presenting to that group, brought in a ton of peer-reviewed research from California, Texas, that type of thing. Uh, they had very little questions. There's very little conversation on it, because I think we did so much front-end work. And this is a better part of a six- or eight-month process that we've been trying to get this thing through. The, uh, Jamie and her team finalized the education last week. Once we, we couldn't really build all of the education until, uh, we made sure that the NPCC didn't make any changes. Uh, we finalized all that last week, and then she and her team are in the process of getting that rolled out to our staff. Uh, we have to be fully operational by February fourteenth, which does correlate with the, uh, the rollout of our state EMS protocols on the same day, so it kind of matches up nicely there. One, one piece to this is that it is, um, we need to be mindful that this type of thing is very cutting-edge. It's very, very interesting. Um, but there are, there's sort of a low bar, a low exclusionary bar on there, and the thing is that we want to make sure that all the folks are safe. So, the program is very rigorous, uh, and it's, it's one of those things where if you hit a certain trigger, where we'll have to recommend that you go to the ED anyway, which is just a safeguard for those patients. All of the, all the calls will be getting, uh, reviewed for quality, hundred percent, and obviously, we will, we will also be looking at, uh, any patients that are taken to there. If we subsequently get called there to end up taking them to an ED, all that will be evaluated as well. Um, so, it's really exciting. Um, it's been a long time coming. Um, yeah, hopefully, we don't have a huge, um, number of folks that are taking there, but I do think it's another tool in the toolbox, and it shows that, you know, this is something else that keeps patients that don't need to be in the emergency department, uh, out of the emergency department. They're in a place where they have resources. They're getting watched by professionals. Uh, it's another service that you all are providing, and I think it's just, uh, it just helps the system work overall. So, with that, I'll take any questions?
No, thank you very much. We've been, uh, we've been talking about this for a while, since the Sobering Center opened, whenever it was brought to our attention, that, you know, the people that would most likely would be transporting, uh, people to the center can't transport them. So, uh, it's, now, it's, I'm glad that it, now we can see how, how it works, and, and I'd be very interested in, in this, the overall statistics for the Sobering Center after we go through a couple football cycles.
Yes. Yeah, and, and as the months progress, we'll, we'll be keeping tight controls on all of the, the data and the folks that we transport there, and I will bring that to you all in a regular- you all on a regular basis as well.
I was, I participated in the Morgantown Community Resources, Inc. board meeting last night, and there's a lot of discussion about this, they're very excited. It's already in operation as far as the application you're talking about. I'd like to thank you and your work down there, and I know the delegate Statler was doing some of the initial legwork on this. I know it ended up going in a different direction, a quicker vein that you were able to get it pushed through, so thank you for that, and-
There is a piece, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. We do have to remember that it is a two-year test program, so we definitely got to be good on our data, and then start the process of, if, if it's something we want to continue, if we need to make tweaks to it, to make sure that we're good to potentially either get it extended or get it actually put into, to rule.
We'll constantly be evaluating.
Wonderful. And this is the only place in the state that that will be, this is occurring, and that, that has been granted.
That's correct. I will tell you that the, this program, when we proposed it and after it went through NPCC, I got a lot of phone calls, they're like, "We want to know how you're going to make this work." The big question, the big thing that they had a lot of it was on the funding side of it, where a lot of the counties don't necessarily have the, the means, where a lot of folks, there's always the funding piece of it. And I told them that, you know, at least in this initial phase, I, I don't think the numbers are going to be humongous, you know, we are, the, the citizens did appropriate a levy for us, and I think that until such time that it becomes overwhelming, like, let's, let's get the proof of concept and get the thing working, and then, at, at a point in time, if it gets overwhelming, we can have that conversation down the road. But that was some of the conversation from other agencies around the state.
I think that this has been a wish list for several centuries, well, seventy-seven decades, that we would have this program, and then you brought to our attention the concern about not being able to transfer to the Hope Hill Sobering Center, and then it's taken five or six months working with everyone, and we really appreciate this. The whole concept is to make this community a safer place and to help those individuals. And I think you, like you said, it's just another key in the door that opens up to help other people, and we really appreciate it. So I'm very excited to follow the information and the data. Thank you.
Thanks, Forrest. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak as an elected official? Nope. Okay. Seeing none. Reports from county commissioners. Sean?
Since last week, I had the pleasure of going to the swearing-in of Judge Perry De Christopher and our new prosecutor, Gabriel Musiolo. There's a lot of, very well attended, and looking forward to the future of the prosecutor's office and working with Gabe as we just started to budget. She'll be thrown right into it, because we'll be doing the, working on the budgets the next couple, couple of months. Monday, I participated with a grant cycle training with our county grant administrator and our county administrator. And Monday was an important day, it was Gwen's birthday. So I had two birthdays, one on the 25th and one on the 30th. We celebrated on Saturday. We went up to a Penguins game, it was a great game. We were from here to that TV, away from the action on the ice, but unfortunately, they lost. And I picked that game because it was against a team with a losing record, and I wanted to go see one win, and I've told my girls, they're not going to any games with me anymore. During college, when I went, the Pens always won. Of course, that was during the 90s when they were winning Stanley Cups. Today, we had our call this morning with Greene County, and it's a regular day. Tomorrow is Mon County Day at the Legislature. Russ Rogerson, he's actually heading down tonight for reception. Unfortunately, due to my schedule, I won't be able to participate, but I encourage people to participate in that, in that event. Friday, we'll have a Board of Review and Equalization Hearing, and then staff reports. And then Sunday, we'll, I believe all three of us and our ministry, and our staff will be going to the West Virginia Association of Counties Conference in Charleston. And that's all I have.
Great. Welcome back to America.
Yeah. I just came back from vacation. I'd like to say I'm happy to be here, but it was 83 and sunny there, and just, oh, jeez. Anyway, I appreciate Tom, Sean, Renetta, and Colleen for picking up the slack while I was gone. And I'd like to give a little shout-out and congratulations to our Parks Department, especially Chestnut Ridge, and, and our sledding hill is operational, and the, the lift is working, and if you get on their Facebook page, you can see it in operation, it's pretty neat. It's, it's very similar to, like, parks around at Wisp and at Snowshoe, and it's, it's really exciting. So if you want to go, make sure you call and make a reservation, because the time slots fill up fast, we can only have so many people on the hill at the same time, so that's great. It's really neat to see it after years of planning and putting it together, and a big thank you to J.R. Petsko for some outside-the-box thinking to get it operational, so that's all I've got.
Thank you. To continue on that, you're very excited, they did a soft opening last week, we were able to do it one day, and then the next day, it got 55 degrees and all the snow melted. But they are out there right now, in fact, that's what I was texting to make sure, that they are looking forward to Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, 10 to noon and 1:00 to 3:00. But as Jeff said, we strongly recommend you make reservations. We're only permitted to have 50 people, well, that's what we're doing right now, 50 people with the tubes during a two-hour time period. So, we're very excited to see, I'm going out there Saturday to take a look at it, so, and it, it, it's really good. This is where the levy monies have, have gone to, and people will be able to see that. Second thing is, I went to a meeting on Sunday, and it was the Mon County Animal Welfare Network. And one of the ideas that I'm really excited about is that numerous organizations, Animal Friends, MSnap, Mon County K9 Adoption Center, Humane Society, Morgantown Stray and Feral, Appalachian Peace Pals, didn't even know these existed, Mount Neere for Mutts, Homeward Bound, Animal House, and SNIP, were all there to discuss issues that are important to all them, and also about spaying animals and so on. And I think it's something that it's great to see, as we did with the Art Council, they're coming together and hopefully coming back to us with recommendations and, and ideas. And I just think it's something that, very important, and I see that, I kept calling it dyslexic, I kept calling it the Spin Center instead of the SNIP Center, so I apologize for that.
Would have been different.
Yeah. Third thing, let's see, we are, as, as Sean said, we're going down to Charleston, and I was invited to speak in front of the Canal County Commission Tuesday morning. I am planning to do that, and also thank them for working together and have a, an idea and a plan to work together, and I'll announce that down there. So, very excited and appreciative that they asked us, that we could speak before them. With that, anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We be gone. Go Eagles.